Very good. Thank you.
Okay, welcome to the November 21st, 2020 public school meeting, Pelham Public School Meeting. It's an emergency meeting due to the pandemic. So I'd like everyone to introduce themselves and say whether they're alone or in a room with someone. So myself and Sarah Morindos are in the school library. Darlene?
Darlene Green with Home Alone.
Okay, Debbie?
Debbie, Ryan, Home Alone.
Troy? Troy?
Troy, percent, I'm alone.
Okay, David?
David Wilkinson, and I'm Home Alone.
Okay. Joey is also here, Joey Holy, and Chip is also on the Zoom. Alright, so I'm gonna turn it right over to Dr. McGee to talk about pandemic response.
Yep, so first off, I want to say thank you, and I just want to note that I'm also at Pelham Elementary School, but for technical reasons, I'm sitting in the assistant principal's office. Joe, you're in the conference room, I believe. Troy, I don't know where you ended up, but you're all up here. Pardon?
Front office.
Front office. So we're, we just are doing it this way for ease of our communication, and so that we can record. So I am very sorry to have interrupted your Saturday morning, and I appreciate you getting together. I'll cut right to the chase, which is based on data that I will go over in a minute, I am recommending that on Monday and Tuesday of next week, we have early release across the district as we would for any early release days, and that starting on Monday, November 30th, and extending for at least two weeks, so that would be till December 11th, that we pivot to remote. And I am making that recommendation based on the metrics that I've been using internally that I'd like to walk you through. But first, I just want to clarify, there are five key issues that I think should be taken off the table right away, so people are clear. The first is the early release next Monday and Tuesday would follow the same schedule we do for all early releases, and if you approve this, I will have principals communicate that. The second is that school buildings in the SAU will remain open during this time period, and will follow the same universal guidelines that we did coming into the building today, and that we do typically, and that so all buildings would remain open. The next is that preschool, as we've planned over the last week, will remain in session during this pivot. The next point is that we will consider in-school special education services on a case-by-case basis. And the last is those family choice decisions that we have made for kindergarten through eighth grade to be in place starting December 3rd will continue. We've just shared those with staff yesterday, and we will be working to share the decisions next week and prior to the start of the second trimester. All of this being said, if the board does support this change, the key will be communication, and so what I will need to do is immediately following this meeting, not only share this recording, but also make sure that we're frequently going through a detailed, clear communication about the status of things. And so I just want to take another minute, if I could, to explain the rationale. I shared with you a memo. I'll post this memo as well on the school district website after the meeting. But we've looked at criteria first related to the level of community transmission, and using DHHS data for community transition, we've looked at the test positivity rate. That continues to be minimal as things currently stand. We've also looked at the number of new infections, and that is actually at a, let's see, I won't use the right term here, at a substantial level, the highest level. And we've looked at the number of new hospitalizations, which right now is at a minimal level. And so in terms of community transmission, we have two minimal and one substantial, and so in general, we're kind of at a moderate level of community transmission. We've also looked secondarily at school impact, again, three criteria. In terms of transmission within the schools, currently, we only have sporadic cases within the schools, and we have not in the last two weeks had any clusters within the schools. Student absenteeism remains very low, well, under the 15% threshold of our criteria to see whether or not that's having a school impact. But our staff capacity is strained, and that's one of the, probably the key issue that has brought me here. It is why we needed to pivot yesterday at the high school level, because of staff capacity, and we have, are seeing staff impacted not only by COVID-19 secondary impacts, close contact and quarantining, but we're also seeing the impact of other school districts which have made this pivot, creating childcare challenges, and on top of the normal challenges that we always face this time of year, having to do with cold and flu season. As a result, I see staff capacity, while currently strained, will likely move to a critical level by November 30th, and that's really the heart of where my recommendation is. As a result, I see us needing to move, and I wanted to make this recommendation now, so that there would be time to move, for families to plan, for coverage starting on November 30th, and for staff to do planning both for the specific instructional materials for the next two weeks, to get them in students' hands as needed, and the significant commitment we have to working with students with special needs. That's both a statewide executive order to consider that face-to-face instruction. It's also something that, as a school district, we're very committed to making sure that those students continue to have access to a free and appropriate public education. So that's, that's what I'm asking for today. I very much want to answer any question the board has, because this is a significant shift. I also just want to highlight that this is, first off, I am very proud of the fact that we are having this discussion in late November. There was great work to get us to this point. And the second thing is, I want to recognize that this, this transition is something, while it feels disruptive, is something that the board has been talking about, and you've been, you've been sharing back to me that this would be a likely outcome at some point over the course of this very unusual year, and so it's just that, I think, in my opinion, looking at the data in our metrics, that the time has arrived.
Okay, thank you Troy. I mean, thank you Chip. So who would like to start with their questions or comments for Chip? Go ahead Darlene.
I agree with you wholeheartedly that it's time. My concern is, with the holidays and Christmas, and people getting sick and whatnot, is December 11th too early to come back? I think, I think wait after, after the holidays, come back the day after New Year's and start fresh. Because you'd have, what, two weeks in between the 11th and the holiday, if that, right, two weeks? That it's not gonna get, in my opinion, it's not gonna get better. It'd be a good time to let people do their travel, do whatever they're gonna do, clean the building.
Darlene, I need to speak very bluntly about that. Travel, as recommended at the federal and state level, separate from Pelham School District, it is, it is recommended that people do not travel.
Right. Absolutely not.
No piece of this that is meant to encourage travel, because that is candidly dangerous as I understand it.
Right, right.
And I know you know that, too.
Right, right. I didn't mean that they should travel. I mean that human beings, free choice, family, college students, reality-based. That's just an opinion.
And so you may have noticed, I dropped in my recommendation, the term "through at least December 11th." And so I am very aware of what you're saying. I'm very open to it. But I don't have enough of a crystal ball to know where we will be. But I have had many people and many with deep public health expertise suggest the same thing to me, and I will continue to look closely at it, given our metrics.
Just easier if you don't need a time to plan, but for people, that's also.
Yep, I tend to feel the same way as Darlene. I understand what you're saying also, Chip. The reason, another reason why I tend to lean in the direction of Darlene is that while families will have to plan for childcare, for example, or make arrangements with their employers also, for example, planning between now and the 11th, and then possibly thinking we might be done with the remote pivot at that point, planning to resume what is currently their normal operation, then having to make new plans, and some of the resources available for those new plans might not be available. I wonder, and I don't think we have the opportunity, but it would be good to know what the consensus of the community is on whether they prefer a predictable outcome from now until after the New Year's holiday, or if they prefer the resume in, in the building attendance on the 11th, if we are able to. And so I think it really comes down to how families are going to plan, and whether they prefer planning on an ongoing contingency basis, as for example, resuming on the 11th, or planning farther out with resuming after the New Year's. So I hear what you're saying, but I lean in Darlene's direction, because I think planning becomes a challenge.
Best question?
Sure.
So I guess, I'd like to understand the rationale for, of picking two weeks. I know we've been kind of going on two-week increments, obviously, but if health experts and other people are kind of leading towards a break all the way till the New Year, what's the thought pattern on picking the 11th, Chip?
Yep. So we have had a very similar internal discussion in the last 48 hours as well, and our approach, going back to the reopening safely guide, was first that safety needs to be the first consideration, and the second is, if we can operate safely, then the Pelham School District should have, allow students to come to school. And, and so our default has been operating on that thought, is if we can, we should be. And we are facing right now, families going into quarantine, and those typically last 14 days, but it's hard to see out beyond, beyond that. And so that's, that's the logic we used, and perhaps I'm a little stubborn that I don't want to give up school days until we know that we need to, because I know how important it is to have the default position be in school, to have schools open if we can.
Yeah, it's funny, I, I had a visceral reaction for our kids thinking, oh my God, like, because being in school is the best thing for them, right? But then there's all these myriad of other logistics around this, you know, daycare and health, and, like, people's jobs, people's life, like, there's just so, it's such a thing, but, you know, I feel like a mom, like, I want my babies in school, right, you know, but, but there's just so many other competing factors that seem to overwhelm that ability to do that, right? What we want to do and what the ability to do might be two different things. Yeah, it, I don't know. So that's, that's my thought. I, I, maybe, maybe parents are knowing, if we pick the 11th, and then we have to bump it forward longer, if we tell parents that's what we're gonna do, and let them know that we have to relook at it, and maybe pick a date prior to the 11th, that we're gonna relook at this and determine what our plan of action is, we'll still give them time to plan. But if, for some reason, you know, we're able to contain things, it doesn't, it doesn't seem likely, but you never know, and we'd be able to get our kids back in school. I don't, I'm not really giving you really good answers, I'm sorry.
No, well, very honestly, what I was hoping to do is exactly this, which is, I think this is what governance is, if I could editorialize, which is you, we have five community opinions here, and I've made my best recommendation, and I'm very comfortable with it being shaped by you, because you're the governing board. This is how it should work.
Troy, what did you, you held your hand up earlier.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciate that we're having this dialogue proactively instead of reactively. And my concern is that anytime prior to the 11th, under this plan that we've got on the table, is that we're gonna end up finding ourselves in a reactive position. And we can be even more proactive now by extending this through the holidays. I'd also like to hear a little bit more, I guess, about the interruption to routine. You know, we're planning for this pivot to remote, if we come back on the 11th, we're in school for a maximum of, let's say, around nine days, and then we're back into holidays where people may be even more inclined to, to travel and put us at a higher risk of opening. The staffing considerations come into play. I guess I'd just like to hear a little bit more about the interruption to routine that goes along with potentially coming back to school on December 11th.
Yep. So that is an undeniable concern compared to have, if I think about the interruption compared to what I wish we had for a nice, clean school year without a pandemic, it's incredibly painful. What I was comparing it to was the difficulty of us getting restarted. And part of my struggle is that once, once you're in one mode, it's easier to stay in that mode than to switch. And I, I am concerned, I, I want to keep us in school and have the default setting be in school. And so my, it is more disruptive to not know, that's true, than to know, but given that we don't know what the future has, in my opinion, it's better to assume we're in school than not. And so I don't mean to be bleak, but I am gonna be direct, which is to say, I don't know either what January 4th looks like, or January 11th, or January 18th. And I wouldn't have believed on March 13th of 2020 that we would have as much trouble as we would have getting back into school. And when I look at the school impacts, I am incredibly proud of families and teachers and administrators, because yesterday we had kids K through 8 in school, and we had a safe and healthy day. So that's my thinking, but this is not black and white for me. I, I think you're asking, those are good questions, and I can't say I'm 100% positive that it's better to plan on being back the 11th. It's just, I think, the best alternative out of a bunch that aren't, aren't ideal.
It's been amazing that we haven't had more positive cases in the schools, considering all that's going on around us in terms of the trends and patterns of COVID cases in Pelham and the surrounding communities. So that's a testament to compliance of mask usage and physical distancing, and all of our safety and health guidelines. But that's, we can only control what we can control right now. There's a lot going on around us, non-compliance with certain guidelines, that is inevitably making a contribution to, to the spike. Because there's more of a point there than, than a question.
So.
That's right. And I need to make sure I keep that in mind, that we don't control all the variables.
But I, I mean, so I'm very torn on this subject. I've been going back and forth for probably two weeks now, whether we should just pack it until January, or take it two weeks at a time. So we just came off, you know, a two-week remote period at all our schools, and now, you know, we had a little bump with the high school yesterday, but, you know, it looks like we're gonna make it to Thanksgiving. I kind of agree with Chip that every day a kid can be in school is a good day. So I feel as though we should take this in two weeks right now, to say, okay, we're gonna stay out, return on the 14th, and then we have seven in-school days. That's an opportunity for kids to check in with their teachers face-to-face, check in with their peers face-to-face, their school counselors face-to-face. We're, we're moving into a long winter, and, you know, it's already dark at 4 o'clock, and many people are feeling the effects. I'm concerned about what this is gonna do to our kids, and if we can open safely on the 14th for seven more school days, I think it might be the best thing. And then we are planning ahead, you know, so it's set. We're closed until the 11th, opening on the 14th, and we'll go on school vacation on the 23rd. I do think we need to have another discussion before we go on vacation about whether we open on January 4th, or whether we prolong that, but to see where we are at that time. But I do think that we need to, we need to keep the kids in mind, too, that this is hard on all of us, and we just don't know what the future's gonna hold. So why not try it at a two-week? And we might end up not opening, but, you know, I'm just thinking of, of the effects of these students. It's, it is best for them to be in-person, in-class, if they can be. Go ahead, Deb.
Thanks, Megan. So I know, obviously, there's not time for polling and things like that, but I, what's the, what's the thoughts of our administration team, and any, you know, talk from our, our staff on, I mean, I know, I'm pretty sure I know they believe kids belong in school, right, obviously, they're teachers, but that switching back and forth, and the effect on them, and the effect on the students, does, does having them back in, or knowing they're gonna back in outweigh definitely just saying you're out for how long?
Yeah. So first, talking about my administrative team, I felt very grateful. Yesterday, we had a similarly blunt conversation, and while we're not all on precisely the same page, internally, we kick it around in a good way, we, and we're competitive in the sense of really wanting to see if we can make this happen, because we know it's right for kids if we can do it safely. We recognized in the last 48 hours that we simply, we simply couldn't, and we anticipate staffing to be that much harder after the holidays. And in terms of staff, I haven't had, had as blunt a conversation, because I think that that's unfair to put them in that place, but I have had candid conversations with the PDA executive leadership. And I want to make sure that my, my first thought, my first comment is, it's only because of professional staff that we're having this conversation in November, and not prior, because they have stepped up over and over. And even yesterday, as I walked through the elementary school, and classes were full, kids came yesterday, and we were staffed up and ready to go, that they are, even with the stress, I know that their first priority is wanting to make sure that this works for kids, that they can do it. It's, it's not an easy time, but I, I have found the professional staff, all staff really are in it to try and make this thing work. And we're pretty tired, too. We're pretty tired.
I worry, I worry about this happening.
Really? Because that's when people get sick. When you're tired, run down, that's when things, you can't fight it.
That's one of the, that's one of the reasons I anticipate staffing being more of a challenge. I've come up to a lot of Thanksgivings in my career as an educator, and it's always such a gift, because we've been running hard, and it's dark, and it's just good to recharge batteries. And I've never seen batteries run down this low. And people are gonna get colds and flus on top of this, this pandemic issue. So that's been a factor in my mind as well.
Go ahead, Darlene.
I also have a concern. So we have the new mandates, or new suggestions from public health about mask breaks being outside. How is that with the snow and the bad weather? How is that gonna happen? How are they gonna get out there?
Right, so outside isn't the only alternative, though. It's, it's the easiest. The other mask breaks are separating by six feet. And then the other reality is that there are fewer, there are fewer mask breaks. I just need to make sure I'm honest about that. And it gets exhausting.
It does. Absolutely.
But I, we also don't let them take shoe breaks, right? You do get used to things. And I'm more used to it. I don't have to right now, because I'm in the AP's office, but I'm much more used to masks than I was last April.
I think that's true for all of us.
Go ahead, Troy. Go ahead, Troy.
Thank you. Chip, can you give us a sense of the implications of the decision here on winter sports? Is any?
I have that on to do.
Yep, so there's, that actually leads into another thing. My, my recommendation at this point is that it does not impact winter sports, that because of the nature of choice with those activities, and that serious practice would be after the planned, I'm sorry, organized practice, I should say, is after the planned return, that it would, it would not impact the winter sports. And I just want to reiterate, it also is not intended to impact second trimester plans for K through 8. I know a lot of families are gonna wonder, well, does this change the fact that I've requested to go from in-school to remote, or from remote to in-school? And the answer to that is no, we're continuing, that's a parallel track to this.
Thank you for that.
So.
You make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, if, does anybody else have any questions or comments? It's, you know, Chip said this is his recommendation. If you want to push back, now is your chance.
I still think we should wait till after the holidays end to January, but that's my opinion.
I was kind of thinking along those lines, Darlene, too, but there's nothing preventing us from having this dialogue again, somewhat sometime between now and then. Our next board meeting is gonna be, what, December 2nd? You know, maybe we have a follow-up to this to evaluate where things are at, and see if we end up going in that direction. You know, I didn't love the idea of the interruption in the back and forth between in-person and remote, but I think it's the, the value of having our students in school, to the extent we can do that safely, outweighs the predictability of potentially extending this remote environment through the New Year's holiday. through the New Year's holiday.
Right, and there's no doubt that being in school is more educationally valuable, but I, that feeling is that if we go back on the 11th, it's going to be the same as this. One day, one school's down, the next day, another school's down, and parents can know and plan, and like David had mentioned, get their work schedule set, and, I don't know. I always want to know ahead, but that's just me.
But unfortunately, we can't predict anything at this point. We could, in January, we could be shut down till March. We don't know at this point. So I think that any day that we can get these kids in school, now, you know, on Thursday night, when we got the call at 9:30, you know, I immediately said to Chip, we need to talk about this, like, this just won't work day-to-day. So if we get closer to the 14th, and we just say, God, the cases are through the roof, we're not going to have the staff, because we've heard that this many people are quarantined, then we'll make the call and say, yep, we're shut down. So none of us want it to be a day-to-day decision, but increments, so, you know, two-week increments, if we can do it that way at this point. I just, I just, there's no right answer to this. There's just no right answer.
Can we ask Joe's opinion? What does he think from a student's point of view?
Yeah, so from students that I have talked to over the past week or so, many of them have come up to me and asked me if there was any topics on the agendas for Wednesday about this, and they, most of them expressed their, in a way, interest in going out through the holidays. They talked about the obvious safety piece, and they said they would feel safer if there wasn't that time that they could get potentially exposed coming back on the 14th, although they didn't really mention that those days, because they were thinking more long-term. But I think a lot of the students, at least at the high school, are more easily adaptable to whatever order they decide, but a lot of the students that I have talked to said that they would, they are in agreeance that they think a more long-term closure would be beneficial for health and safety. And as I said, they're more easily adaptable, so if you come back and say, at this point, you only want to go through the 11th, it's a little bit more, it's a little bit easier for high school students to go remote with a couple days' notice. And obviously, it is a little bit harder for the elementary and middle school, but I think the students are, they agree that they would like enclosure of some length, and they think that it would be beneficial to their health and safety.
So if I were going to express, if I was voting right now, I'm kind of on the fence. I hear Megan and I hear Troy, and since you're the parents with students in the building, then your opinions carry weight with me. I understand from Megan's perspective, if we look at this as a two-weeks-at-a-time timeframe as opposed to day-to-day, then that gives parents more stability to make plans. And while I agree that safety is important, I think practicality ultimately carries a very significant weight, and that is specifically with regard to how parents will manage childcare. High school is one thing, the elementary school and the memorial school, that's another. And so I think that, I think that it's challenging to know what parents really think. We know how they express their view with the family choice approach, but now, here we are in a situation with choice or not, we will have to be remote at least some of the time. And so the question almost needs to be, look, if we have to go back and forth between remote and not remote, which do you prefer, a longer period of remote, so you can plan, or take it as it comes? And at this point, we're saying, let's measure it in two-week blocks. That makes it more plausible to me, but I'm very concerned about how families, not all families have the leeway of saying, okay, I'll work from home. Some struggled significantly in the spring with displacement from their work, and now they are back at work, and if they have to leave work for purposes of taking care of the kids, that could have serious financial ramifications, which ultimately affects student safety as well. So I'm still on the fence. I'm not convinced that staying, returning to school on the 11th will be prudent from a planning perspective. I'm willing to agree that having the kids in the school building makes sense for as many as possible, but I am concerned with how parents are going to plan. So if you ask me to vote right at this minute, I'll vote yes, but I'll be looking over my shoulder saying, okay, how many parents are now going to struggle perhaps more as a result of that outcome? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, David, thank you. So then I propose that we shut down to the 11th, we return on the 14th, and we revisit this subject at our next school board meeting. So now we've given parents the two weeks to plan. You know, everyone will know, we're not returning to school until after the Thanksgiving holiday till the 14th, and we will put this on our agenda to discuss again on the 4th and see where we are at that time. And, you know, maybe at that point, or maybe within a week of that, we decide, you know what, we're just staying close to Christmas, and we'll, there's always that possibility. I mean, there's a possibility on Sunday night at 9 o'clock, we get a call, because that many more staff cannot come in because of quarantine or exposure, or kids being home or whatever. I mean, it's just, there's just, again, no easy decision. But for today, I feel like the right thing is to say, yes, we are closing until the 14th, after Thanksgiving.
I would ask only that we, I really appreciate that, I would love it, not love, but I think it's really important that it's on the agenda for our next meeting on December 2nd. I've had to do the same thing, but I'd ask that we use the term pivot to remote as opposed to shutdown.
Okay, yeah, 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 sorry.
No, that's all right. It's just a mindset thing that I think helps, because school's going to keep going, and our teachers actually are going to, teachers and students are going to be working their tails off. It's just going to be in a remote setting, and in some ways, our professional staff's going to be working harder, because they're going to be switching. I wouldn't want that to be lost, and I don't think you meant that.
No, I, no. Pivot to remote till December 14th.
Want to make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to incorporate the recommendations of the superintendent as outlined to us with that, that's the, shut down now and then pivot back on the 11th.
Return to in-school on the 14th.
Yeah, return.
I'm not sure if you got my second, but I will second that motion.
Well, hold on, we're open Monday and Tuesday. So we'll pivot to remote November 30th till December 11th, returning in-person on December 14th at this point.
That's right, and does that incorporate the early release on Monday and Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah, as outlined by you at the.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. Troy, you second?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Debbie?
Yes.
Troy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Darlene?
I'll say aye, because we're going to discuss it again, and we'll see what happens. Be a team player.
Thank you, and aye, aye. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Chip?
Just that I now, I first thank you very much. I think that this will help, and the biggest thing that I have to do today now, because we've done it now in the morning, it gives all of today and all of tomorrow for people to understand the message to get out, make arrangements for early releases on Monday and Tuesday, to begin all that planning for after Thanksgiving, because there's a lot of burden we just put on families, and I'm grateful that they have at least some time to plan for it, so thank you.
Okay, great. Then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Wish everybody a healthy, happy, and safe Thanksgiving. I will move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Darlene?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.